This conference will now be recorded.
Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. If you could all stand and join me for the pledge. Thank you. At this time, is there any public comment? Okay, noting no public comment. Can I get a verification of the posting of the agenda, please?
Pam Moore, for the record. The agenda was posted on August 1st between the hours of 1:00 and 5:00 at the locations listed on the agenda in according Swiss statutes.
Thank you, Pam. Can I get an approval of the agenda as submitted?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mr. Chair, second motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Six, consideration of possible action, approval of the minutes of the meeting held on April 16th, 2025, appeal hearing, June 5th, 2025, June 24th, 2025, joint workshop with the planning commission. Can I get a motion for those minutes, please?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, find that the staff shortage in the clerk treasurer's office have caused delays to the completion of the minutes and to approve the minutes of the appeal hearing held on April 16th, 2025, as presented. Also, the minutes held for June 5th, 2025, and June 24th, 2025, the joint workshop with the planning commission.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Move to our first appointment, consideration of possible action, city of Fernley's temporary applications, 94356, 94357, 94358, and 94359, filed by Resource Concepts Incorporated to change the point of diversion, place of use, and manner of use in a portion of the existing permit, 80184, from an underground source located in Lyon County to a new point of diversion and place of use inside of Churchill County.
Matt, turn your camera off.
I'll go ahead and handle this. Mr. Chair, Joe Sanford, for the record. This is a temporary application for the transfer of water. It is moving from Lyon County to Churchill County for the place of diversion. This would be supporting the Sierra Solar project. We have reviewed this application as with our water consultant, and we have no reason to object to it at this time.
Thank you, Joe. And then we have someone online for this one as well.
Hi, yes, thank you so much, everyone. My name is Jennifer Shahin. If you need my address for the record, it's 7155 South Lindell Road, Las Vegas, Nevada. I'm here on behalf of NV Energy, who's currently constructing the Sierra Solar project, and I'm here to answer any questions that the board may have. We believe this project is helping support local tax revenue, helping to build out our infrastructure for the electricity system, to help business development. And in order to avoid delay for submitting documentation to the state engineer, I respectfully request that the clerk provide a letter summarizing the board's final recommendation at the conclusion of today's meeting. Here to happy, again, happy to answer any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any questions or comments from board or staff? Is there any public comment? If none, a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I've moved to support the application as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you very much.
Seven B, consideration of possible action, approval of eight settlement agreements relating to the Nevada opioid settlement. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, this is Joe Sanford, for the record. There are a number of opiate litigation settlements ongoing. As the litigation has proceeded, the large companies have already settled. This is some additional new companies that are smaller in range but have also reached settlements with local government agencies across the state, specifically Alvegen, Amneal, Apatex, Hikma, Indivior, Mylan, Sun, and Zytus. These were relatively small for a total impact of about $25,000 to the county, but we would recommend that you approve the entrance into the settlement agreements as presented.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions or comments from board or staff? Is there any public comment? A motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve entering into an additional settlement agreement in the national opioid settlement litigation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Seven C, consideration of possible action, approval of the purchase of AudioEye for the county Civic Plus subscription for web accessibility. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, this is Joe Sanford, for the record. The Churchill County website is operational and has been for a period of time. Currently, we have our public information officer review all of the postings that are placed on the website to ensure compliance with ADA requirements. However, over time, ADA requirements for our websites have increased substantially. It has become a target of litigation across many larger counties and larger organizations that are now filtering down to smaller organizations. Essentially, this is requirements that every photograph have a description, that text can be read aloud through the interface, things like that. Our current web provider, Civic Plus, has agreed to provide services to ensure compliance of this nature for the cost of $4,500.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions or comments from board or staff?
Is that an annual expense?
It is, yes.
And do we have anything in the budget for that, or just?
This is, this is not line itemed. It was expected to be coverable under the IT budget, but it was not a specific line item, no.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there any public comment? Okay, motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the purchase of AudioEye for Civic Plus subscription.
Mr. Chairman, a second to the motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Seven D, consideration of possible action, approval of an amendment to a local public agency agreement with the state of Nevada for the reconstruction of Lone Tree Road. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, Joe Sanford, for the record. This is an agreement with the state. You may recall, a couple of months ago, we entered into this agreement with the state for the reconstruction of Lone Tree Road. It was also premised on an agreement with the Navy, memorandum of agreement that we were going to be entering into with them. After the execution on our behalf, we ended up hearing back from the Navy that they had some issues and concerns that they needed to address with their agreement. Based off of that, our agreement with the state needed to be amended. We have provided a full amendment. Largely, it's further protections for the county in the event that, for some reason, insufficient funds are acquired to complete the project in the middle. The memorandum of agreement has been updated by the Navy and approved by them on their behalf, and that is the next item on the agenda. So at this time, I do recommend approval.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions or comments from board or staff?
Just the question I have is, the state agreement is for a period of, until 2030, and then the MOU for the Navy is for a period of 10 years. Do they need to match at any reason?
They do not. The MOU is designed to go further than that, potentially because we may have other projects, but mostly because that LPA agreement with the state could be extended over time as the construction proceeds, if it needs additional time. And that way, we won't have to extend with the Navy as well.
Okay. And then the other thing is, on page eight, the information for Mr. Spross should be updated before we sign that, I think. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments or concerns? Is there any public comment? If none, a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the amended amendment to the agreement with the state of Nevada for reconstruction of Lone Tree Road.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Seven E, consideration of possible action, approval of memorandum of understanding with the Navy regarding the reconstruction of Lone Tree Road. Joe?
This is the second half to that agreement. This is the agreement with the Navy. There are actually four parties. It's described throughout this agreement. The Navy, who will be providing funding to FHWA. FHWA, who will then be providing funding to NDOT. And NDOT, who will then be providing the funding to the county, who will ultimately be selecting a contractor and paying that contractor, which I'm sure you can all understand why bureaucracy is what it is, and this agreement ended up taking almost a year or two actually come to full fruition. But at this point in time, I have no concerns based off of this agreement as presented.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions or comments?
I just had a question. In that MOU, if that, if that B-16 goes dead, they don't use it anymore, who maintains that road from there on?
I think that is a different road. This is the Lone Tree Road agreement.
Yeah, but it says in the MOU, if, as long as the, it's active and a used mill, do we see in the future ever that changing?
I'll let Chris answer this, because I think he's more familiar on what exactly we're talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Spross, for the record. So this MOU, or it's actually a memorandum of agreement, not a memorandum of understanding, is for Lone Tree Road. Currently, a portion of Lone Tree Road is owned by the state of Nevada. The other portion is owned by Churchill County. As we go through this process, the entire road will become Churchill County. It will go into our road inventory, and it will be Churchill County's responsibility to do the maintenance.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there any public comment? Okay, a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the MOU with the Navy regarding the reconstruction of Lone Tree Road.
Mr. Chairman, I make a second to the motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Seven F, consideration of possible action, approval to purchase a replacement server and hardware from CML Security for the sheriff's office in the amount of $115,326.36. Sheriff Hickox.
Good morning. Sheriff Richard Hickox, for the record. This is a unplanned event. We had, as you know, from having toured the jail, we have jails, or cameras throughout the jail, as well as outside the building. They are all ran and come back to a server that is proprietary. It's CML. It was placed, put in place at the start when this building was built. We had one of our cameras malfunction, not act, we couldn't see it. And so we were checking it. We had the text from CML, take a look at it. And that's when they advised us that the server that all of that runs to and all of that records to had had a catastrophic failure. And they could not repair it. And so we are asking for the replacement of that, as well as some updates to some programming, so that it will all work properly. It's seven years old. They had not told us prior to this, as I'm aware of, and I asked my staff this morning, we had no prior knowledge that this was nearing end of life, or that it would be nearing a time when it would start to have failure, and it just had a catastrophic failure. And so we've looked at options to see if we could replace that server with a different server from a different brand, company, that would be cheaper. And because of the proprietary programming and stuff that goes along with that, we can't do that without an additional major expense. And so we're asking that you guys approve this today. The reason that we're asking for that is because it's for the safety and security of the jail and the facility. We can't currently record what's going on in the facility, so there is no ability for us to go back and pull video for crimes or to offset complaints that might have happened. And so we feel like it's a major breach in our security for our facilities. We're asking that you guys approve this today.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any questions or comments from board or staff? Is there any public comment? Go ahead.
I have a question. When I looked at their proposal, I didn't see any sort of warranty or, do you know what the warranty is on this camera system?
I brought the guy that talks to CML with me, so hold on one second.
I'm not aware of the length of the warranty. They didn't mention it. I thought it said something about the parts having their own warranty on them, but I don't have the, the quote in front of me.
Sergeant Jesse Knuckles, for the record.
Yeah, sorry.
Any other questions?
I'd assume that the equipment probably comes with a X amount of warranty, at least one year, maybe five years. That is a concern, you know, so we have some way to work on that.
We have an ongoing maintenance agreement with them as well, because they, all of the jail stuff is CML stuff, because it was built, it was proprietary. That reason it's proprietary, as they explained it to us, is so that it's not as susceptible to hack, hacking from outside, and it's more of a closed-loop system. And so that's the other reason why we couldn't add other people's stuff into it.
That makes me feel a lot better knowing that all the other stuff is CML. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Chris Spross, for the record. If you look at the quote under 2.0 inclusions, item four says, "The required warranties on all workmanship as dictated by the specification." So any parts that have certain warranties, that would apply.
Do you see any extra cost in getting this equipment installed that could cost a significant amount of money that we'd need to, to prepare for? Or do you cover it within your already budgeted amount of money?
I hate to say no, because I never know with the project if they're going to find something else, but at this point, we're fairly confident that this is a pretty precise quote from them. Although we did have a, another issue with programming on the doors today, and I'll talk to you guys more about that later, at a different time.
Sheriff Hickox, did they come out and do a site survey when they put this proposal together?
They did. They, they actually come to our facility frequently. They came several times to make sure that what they were proposing was proper. They did an initial rush job of proposal for us, and they came in with a number of 150,000, but it was ballpark. I asked them to narrow that down, please, through Sergeant Knuckles, who's my contact point with them, so that we actually had a more precise quote. That's why I say I feel fairly confident that this is a more precise quote. But they came out and did, I think, a couple of site surveys on it, and they're coming out today again to be on the site, so.
Okay, that makes me feel more comfortable as well.
Do we know the installation timeline?
We don't. We have a rough estimate of about six weeks.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Any other questions? Is there any public comment? Okay, a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the purchase of a server and hardware from CML Security for the sheriff's office at a cost of $115,326.36.
Mr. Chairman, a second to the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, guys. We'll have to wait till 9:00 AM for that presentation, so we'll jump to letters received. Does anyone want to pull any of those?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a mention of letter received number A and commend the comptroller's office for receiving the certificate of achievement. So thank you, and you and your staff for all the hard work.
Thank you.
And that's on behalf of the commission.
Thank you.
Any other letters you guys want to pull? Okay, does anyone have anything on the consent items they want to pull off? If not, a motion to approve those.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a, excuse me. Mr. Commissioner Hyde, you're good. Go ahead. Too fast. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Does anyone have anything they want to consider for a future agenda item?
I have a couple.
Okay.
I would like to get a periodic report from Jesse on the three C events, kind of what it takes to put those events on and have a better idea of what's there. And we need to talk about the November 6 meeting, possibly moving that, because I will be at a conference for CC Communications. So if we could move that somewhere, maybe we could put that on the next agenda and talk about that move.
Okay. Eric, do you have anything?
Not at this time. I'm, not at this time. I'm starting to work on with Mr. Spross about doing a countywide evaluation of all job descriptions and pay scales and stuff, and we're getting ready to have a lot of discussions, maybe get that on the agenda soon enough to, to get that moving forward.
Okay, go to commissioner and management staff reports. We'll start with you, Commissioner Hyde.
The Fallon Youth Club had their golf tournament. It was a big success. Looks like we did better than last year, so that's great. Had a Parks and Rec meeting, and we're going to get some new panels to make the loading and moving of animals for the rodeos and things better and more efficient. They were really struggling getting animals moved, so that was a $10,000 expenditure that needed to happen to make these events go off, so, thank you.
I had a Carson Water Subconservancy District meeting, and we actually went up to Tric to have our meeting, and then I also had a library board meeting. Pass it off to you, Commissioner Blakey.
Museum meeting, standard business there. Seat of Business Council breakfast. Captain Hayman from the base spoke about the goals and the aspirations he has moving forward. And then I was invited out to the base by Captain Hayman and took a tour of the Navy sales complex and the B-16 bombing range, and was very informative on their mission. And that's all I have.
Sherri?
We're just working on getting the audit done, and I wanted to also note that our certificate of achievement is also an award for all the departments who comply with all the rules and regulations that we are required in the clerk treasurer's office and all the departments that help with the audit, too, and the board. Thank you.
Joe?
Nothing at this time.
Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I as well sent, attended the seat of breakfast last week. Very informative from Captain Hayman. Other than that, nothing to report.
Pam?
I just wanted to remind everybody that property taxes are due on August 18th. We've been very busy in the office doing that. I'll be happy when we can hire staff and have them accept the positions and be able to get back to my job.
Thank you, Pam. Mr. Mallory, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Just to give you a little update on something we're doing. We experienced recently a tremendous influx in the business and other matters that are being tended to by the Civil Division. So, and we have, the same is certainly true for the Criminal Division, but we also have some very capable lawyers there, as well as Civil. So we're switching the, temporarily, the handling of juvenile probation cases and DCFS cases over to the Criminal Division and letting, so that we can free up the Civil Division to spend a little more time on some of the urgent matters that they have before them. As I said, this is a temporary basis. We'll try it and see how it works, but if you can't, if you're looking for somebody someplace and you find out they're in another place, you'll know what happens. Thank you.
Okay, claims and payroll are going around. I guess we'll recess for 20 minutes until we get to 9 o'clock?
Yep. Just late.[191.12]
Understood.
How would that work? Would that be that the, if say for example it's an ADA ramp or something? Would the maintenance come out and do that portion of the work when our crews were out doing the work? Or would our crews do the work and it would be reimbursable? How would, how do you envision that?
Particularly if you have a contract, what I would generally do is enter into an interlocal agreement with you with not to exceed price, in which case you would submit the work that we've done and if we agree upon the parameters of that, then it's an interlocal agreement and we would front it.
Okay. We'll go ahead and resume this meeting. We have Tracy Larkin here with NDOT. She's the NDOT Director, so the floor is all yours.
I didn't get this job because of technical proficiency. Okay, to begin with, and first of all, thank you guys for having us out here, guys and gals. Thank you all for having us out here. I really do like coming out to the rural parts of the area. I have lived, I have lived in Nevada now for over 40 years and worked in, including Churchill County in Fallon and in Elko, so I really do enjoy getting out. So together, together on the road ahead, uniting Nevada, just kind of our signature start off page, I want to introduce you to most of your audience. And so with me today is Mario Gomez, the Deputy Director of Operations. If you guys will just wave, please. Rebecca Capular, who's the Assistant Director of Planning. Zachary Shaw, who is the Rural County Manager. Andrew Lawrence, he's the Assistant District Engineer, D2. The ones I'm naming now are really the ones that you deal with primarily most of the time. Brent Slope, Highway Maintenance Manager over this area here. Tony Gutierrez, Highway Maintenance Supervisor in the area. Matt Mafifi, Mafi, I'm sorry, Highway Maintenance Supervisor here in town. And Chad Coverston, also Highway Maintenance here in town. These are really the stars. These are the backbone of the department and the ones who really are the face of Nevada in the majority of the areas. So now to talk about our engagement process, so this is just really kind of going over what our engagement process is. We do have a One Nevada Plan. This is, I'm sorry, the Rural County Engagement Plan. So we have to, we have both mandatory shops that we need to do and then also individual works, individual meetings going on. So the Rural County Collaboration, it's an integral part of the One Nevada Process. And the One Nevada Process is basically a data-driven process that we use to take in projects' needs, evaluate the needs, and go over the prioritization across the state. And those needs are based on enhanced safety, preservation, preserve the infrastructure, optimize mobility, transform economics, economies, foster sustainability, and connect communities. And then on the next page, I'm going to just go over primarily what this process is. So it's an ongoing, continuous coordination process. And step one is the county workshops. The county workshops are intended for the county staff, law enforcement, and emergency services. And it brings, supposed to bring the county or the city leaders together to talk about the investments and conditions, document the transportation requests to be evaluated and tracked over time, and then report back on work conducted during the previous year and identify opportunities for collaboration. And this, we had a workshop in, out here in Fallon last year. So this is now the next step. Step two is the analysis where we take the county transportation needs back to headquarters, analyze them, and verify each request into a short, mid, or long-range process as well as to identify what task and where they should be throughout the department. Step three, this is where we are now, this is the formal update where we come to the, either the council or the commissioner meeting throughout the state and update you on the status of the NDOT projects within your jurisdiction. And step four is the current community analysis where we take the transportation needs to help us plan for future. And then it's like repeat. So it goes on, but the intent is to keep on fostering this continuous conversation. And with that in mind, we asked for, and we're successful in getting at the last legislation, we asked for a county rural, a rural county specialist. And basically, it is someone who is dedicated at a high level, would be part of the executive team to focus on the rural counties. That will be their job to come out and really interact with you on, more on an informal basis. But what we want to do is really understand more of where your vision is for the county, maybe the growth that you're seeing if you have mining coming in or other type of development. Here, of course, you have the base and there's a lot of activity going on with them. So we just want to understand that better and look for areas where we can collaborate more. And a lot of it, I really want to say, when we talk about projects and a long time ago I was a maintenance engineer in Reno and covered this area, I used to work with some of your, your county and city staff on if you're doing a project and it intersects with our roadway, please let us know if there's a little piece that maybe falls within our right-of-way that maybe we can finish off. It's a win-win for both of us. And it's usually, basically economy is a scale, if you're doing a project and we just add a little bit, so maybe it's a curb return, maybe it's the finish of a sidewalk, a little bit of drainage correction. But those type of things, please feel free to reach out, talk to the district and they'll bring it up to me or to the appropriate people within there. I really want to foster that and I realize as time goes by, relationships change, people change, leadership changes. So I really want to keep that message out there between the districts and you that if there is a way we can partner, and sometimes it's just the little things. So let's see where we are now. So on that part here, so here are the needs. So the mid-range, we'll go over what was copied. So there's about 38% in the mid-range and about 62% in the long range. Like I said, the workshop with Churchill County was held on August 1st, 2024. There was three mid-range and five long-range projects that are in the queue. And the mid-range details, these have been reviewed and they're, they're outside of the STIP area because they require just some more evaluation. It's US 95, improved lighting from Surpa Place to Churchill Village Apartments to include sidewalks. And right now, apparently there's only a shoulder for the pedestrians to work on. Also, on US 95, the county requested a bike path or widening from Wade Lane to the bridge of Coleman Road and Paiute Drive. And for the long range, for the mid-range, the US 50 to Gummaw Drive, the county requested improvements at this intersection. And they're looking at what type of controls and improvements that will be. The long-range details, these are US 95 and Morton Drive, the county requested improvements at this intersection at there. So I asked them to look at, we're looking at this TAP funding, but I also asked them to take a look to see if there's something we can accelerate that project. On US 95, Sheckler Road, you know, I have been working on that particular one for over 20 years. I know that's a very challenging intersection and it's been scoped even just in the last part, it's been scoped three times and the last one was sent to the county in 2024. The current estimate, I think is at seven million. And the challenges are more two to three new structures, a utility power line, and potentially cause right-of-way and utility concerns. So those are, and I'm sure you're more familiar with that than I am right now. US 95 passing lanes at US 95 south of Fallon to Shers. We are looking without, throughout the state, we are looking at passing lanes and putting a priority. 95, 93 are all high, areas of high need, both north and south. And what, a lot of the prioritization now is being based in the areas where we're having the most issues with traffic. We've had a number of fatalities south of Gabs, that's one of our first one, I'm sorry, Beatty, not Gabs, Beatty. And, but it is, and we can provide those locations to you. And then also, Venerati Lane and Tedford Lane, improvements at this intersection. At this point, they're looking at an operational study to be conducted, there is basically the concern is traffic congestion at the Maverick Gas Station, I'm sure generated by Maverick, very popular area. So on the upcoming, the district maintenance, usually I have it just sliding one to one and so I'm a little off my game. So on this part, we have Leetville Junction to Silver Springs, La Hotten Road, we constructed a new bridge, the road repave, the shoulder widening and chip seals. I just actually drove it again this morning, I know that was finished. Stillwater Road, SR 116, crack sealing and patching. And then there's a lot of additional maintenance of just repaving various areas, update the drainage and lighting, some update, upgraded signage, weed abatement, and basically other minor improvements. And these are all done by our maintenance crew in these areas. They've done a great job in there. We've also, we completed, this was actually 24, but the open grade from US 50 from Leetville to Allen. And then also, we did the chip seal from, from, basically all of US 50A, firmly out to Leetville Junction. So Leetville Junction, as you can see, is actually the, the area where they all intersect, but Leetville Junction's looking good. Upcoming district projects, we have the pictures of Dixie Valley Road, and then we're doing a scrub seal from summer, from Churchill County zero to 10 miles out. And then on US 95, Churchill mile post 11 to 13, and US 50 miles, mill and patch the pavement miscellaneous areas. And this will happen through this summer and through the next summer. And then on 722, the cold mix overlay miscellaneous areas and road repair. So that's what's coming up soon. And on county collaborations, and these are here, and this is really with the lead, so some of these are the lead by the City of Fallon, is the Auction Road Improvement. That is the signal, I'm sorry, that's the curb and gutter and ADA projects, ADA sidewalks, bike paths, and streetlights, and a new traffic light to north Whittaker Lane. Highway 50 Project, again with City of Fallon lead, and that's a traffic signal on US 50 and Sherman Street, just east of the Main Street. And Lone Tree Reconstruction, you were already talking, you were already referencing that before, and the project lead is Churchill County. And so yeah, there's a rebuild and repave that lane. And then on the statewide transportation improvement is the, these are funding dependent, but we have the I-80 preservation project, its planned construction is scheduled for 2026. The cost of this is 36 million, it's I-80 from Nightengale Interchange to the Churchill Persian County Line. And then SR 361, its planned construction is scheduled for 2026, and you were referencing this before as the transfer of money, so that's $103 million. That's, but that's Department of Defense funding that will be passed, as you mentioned before, through several layers of bureaucracy, but eventually to the county to construct that. And that's 14 miles of new construction to realign the Gabs Valley Road outside the Navy Range Expansion between Middlegate and Gabs. And then on US 50, the planned construction is scheduled for 2027, and this is Sheckler cutoff to west of Soda Lake Road at the pavement preservation project with ADA signage and light, lighting improvements. So the next steps is just really to continue this cycle, and I have a meeting with Mr. Spross right after this one to basically start some of those conversations. So, any questions?
Thank you, Tracy. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Chris Spross, for the record. I do have a question regarding the partnership that you had mentioned. You had mentioned if the county has a project and it encroaches into the NDOT right-of-way that, that you would want to be involved with that for...
If, I guess, say, you know, if it makes sense, if it's coming in, but...
Understood. How, how would that work? Would that be that the, if, say for example, it's a, an ADA ramp or something? Would the maintenance come out and do that portion of the work when our crews are out doing the work? Or would our crews do the work and it would be reimbursable? How, how would, how do you envision that?
Particularly if you have a contract, what I would generally do is enter into an interlocal agreement with you with not to exceed price, in which case you would submit the work that we've done, and if we agree upon the parameters of that, then it's an interlocal agreement and we would front it.
Okay.
So basically reimburse you.
Okay. So our crews would do the work, but it would be through an interlocal agreement?
Frankly, if you do the work or if you have, you get the contractor to do it, it's usually more economical.
Okay.
And also, if you have someone already working there, it makes more sense not to bring in another crew.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Concerning the US 50 Project Phase Two, does that have anything to do with the stoplight at the Reno Highway there in Sheckler? I think it's been mentioned to in the past about putting the cautionary lights before